Budget deliberations, it is June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Oh, hang on here. Got my wrong thing here. It's June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, the time is three P. M. In attendance are Commissioners Mattari, Brooks, and Duncan. Are there changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Public comment. Hearing none. Our item is FY twenty-five budget brief, including the B budget, our operating expenses, and I'll let our Finance Director Brandy Falcon start us off.
Good afternoon Commissioners Brandy Falcon for the record. We're going to cover B budget requested increases today. So, starting off, looking at our preliminary summary down at the bottom. These are our deficits based, deficits based on the tax increase scenarios. So, at a zero percent tax increase, we would have a five point nine million dollar deficit currently. A two percent increase, we'd have a five point three million dollar deficit. A one, or am I going backwards?
That was a one percent.
Yeah, zero, one, two, three. So, it would go five point three million, four point seven million, and then up to a three percent increase would be a four point one million dollar deficit. So, the first, I'm kind of going to go least detailed to most. So, I'm going to start with the community support services in the Fund Ten General Fund. You don't have a printout of this, it's so small, but this is up on the screen. This is something the Commissioners usually like to review every year. So, this is Fund Ten General Fund, which is under the B O C C, and this is where you budget the dollar amounts that you give to different organizations in the county. So, I've put the FY twenty-four amounts that you budgeted, and then your proposed FY twenty-five amounts, and then the corresponding change. We did cut the ten thousand to Kootenay Recovery Center already. So, I've put that, that down there as a note, and then this is right here what you currently have for the FY twenty-five budget. Was there any changes that you wanted to make to that, or are you comfortable with it as it is?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it. Bill, I know you can't see the screen, but it's the regular Animal Damage Control Board of Community Guardians.
Yep.
Any comments on that?
No.
Okay.
Bruce? No comments right now.
Okay.
Yep, I'm fine.
Then, I'm going to start off with the new program summary. Should be near the top of your pile that you have. And I'm just going to go line by line. So, starting at the top is, and this is where we budget the onboarding costs for new position requests. So, like this first line is twenty-five hundred dollars for the new accounts receivable specialist at Solid Waste. The board already approved that request, that personnel request at the Personnel Meeting. So, I'm just going to go ahead and mark the onboarding costs for this position as approved as well. The next line is twenty-one thousand dollars requested from Carleen in Specialty Court. These are the onboarding costs for her three new position requests, the two new bailiffs, and the security screener, which you currently have highlighted in yellow, undecided if you're going to keep them in the budget or not.
And this would remain the same whether we hire mid-year or not?
Yes, I think so, because it's things like equipment and certain testing, things that you can't necessarily cut in half.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm, I think I should just leave this yellow until you make a decision on that personnel request. The next line is also going to make yellow, that's the onboarding costs for the Airport Deputy Director Position that you have highlighted in yellow. You already cut the new investigator for the prosecutor, so that line is now zeroed out, those onboarding costs. Next, this is a request from the Sheriff's Office for two different programs. The first one is called Leo Web for seven thousand dollars, and then another request for Vigilant Solutions for twenty-one thousand. I'll let Under Sheriff Nelson explain.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Under Sheriff Brett Nelson for the record. The Leo Web Program, as we discussed last week, I did reach out to the Coeur d'Alene Police Department, spoke to their administration. That is a program that is funded by the city for purposes of protecting their individual officers and some of their city staff, based on recent events in the region, and is something, again, that they believe in, another tool for their, to protect their employees.
All right. Is that something that would fall in line with the Association? Is that something the Association would pick up?
It could, but again, I know the question was raised last week.
No, I appreciate the answer.
Coeur d'Alene, they saw it as important, and what it was is one of our patrol officers is the one that sought this out as a recommendation for better protection of their, our personnel.
Sure. All right. Thoughts?
You know, with the entire budget ask, you know, I, I don't really understand where this falls into the, you know, the priority of things. There's only so much money, and we don't have enough money to provide for all the asks. So, the question just comes, you know, where does this fall in the priority of things? You know, I, I know what I'd like to try to accomplish is that we address the staff issues, you know, with the steps, potentially a cola. But, you know, if you go, hey, this is more important, and this should be number one over other issues, then we'll honor that.
Well, based on that, Commissioner, I'm willing to cut it for the purposes of readdressing it going forward down the road. Again, it's something that was brought against, brought forward by our people for the protection of our people, but understanding the concept and the purpose of the board going forward this year, then I have no problem removing it at this point, and we'll, we'll push on.
Yeah, and, and I do want to emphasize that all of the asks seem to be very important. I mean, it's not that any one of them is less, you know, not important, it's just a matter, at some point, they have to be prioritized.
And then the other program, Vigilant Solutions?
Yeah, I.
This is an upgrade to our current system. The one thing that I would stress upon is, I have a hard time understanding why we wouldn't want to go forward with this with a software that recognizes a plate that further identifies only plates that are entered into the system for wanted persons, wanted vehicles, missing persons. It's an officer safety issue, and again, the technology's already in place within the county, within other organizations, and it's simply an upgrade to what we currently have in our vehicles at this time.
Okay, so is there an ongoing cost associated with it?
The ongoing cost was, I believe it's a five-year program, off the top of my head, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, yes, it's up there.
This is just the request form they filled out, so it shows the twenty-one thousand cost every year.
So, this would be, it's like a subscription, this would be the first year's.
Correct.
Fees. And does that limit the number of patrol vehicles? Is it for a certain number?
Well, it's, it's being entered into, and I'm not specific. Kevin can speak to the fact, Captain Smart.
Yes, it's going to be a licensing type issue, and so it'll only be for the current patrol vehicles that we most recently got that have the capabilities of cameras, the new camera systems that are installed within them. And then, you know, moving forward any time, obviously, the more cameras we get, the more licenses for those deputies who are utilizing those vehicles. But, right now, we just have the twenty-eight that are available to be able to do this.
Twenty-eight?
Right.
Okay.
All right, so before, it wasn't necessarily presented as a one that only identifies the ones that are in the system, that it just was a license plate reader, so you could walk, you know, drive through a parking lot and read all the plates instead of just the.
Well, it's going to hit them all, but it's looking for specific identifiers that are in the system. If it doesn't recognize it as being one, it just passes over and goes, goes on to the next one, looking, looking for a true match to what's in the system. And then these ones will just be set aside, looking for specific vehicles.
Okay, so I heard Under Sheriff say it's an upgrade to the system we already use, but is it new, or is it, do we already have it in our cars?
Not in the cars, the cars have the capabilities, but we have stationary cameras that have been in place for years.
Right.
That the system is the same, branched over from those, that previous fixed camera systems. Now, the cars can also access the same information.
We can just keep it on for now.
For now.
Yeah, I think it ultimately, it's just going to come down to, you know, we're going to end up with, you know, more of these that are going to be kept on, than we'll have the capacity for, and then we'll just have to decide.
So, you want to cut the Leo Web Program, but for now, leave the Vigilant Solutions in there?
Yes.
Yes.
And Bill, chime in anytime you have thoughts on these things.
Yeah, the second, the subscription service, excuse me, I'm very much in favor of. It doesn't, it doesn't just go around scanning license plates, looking for, looking for trouble. It gives you information about those that are already in the system, is that correct?
Correct, it's looking for things that already have a nexus to crimes that were, that were trying to solve, where people were trying to locate their safety and well-being.
So, these people almost by definition are, are not likely, but a, a good possibility there's somebody in there who's, could be a dangerous person.
That is.
Well, we wouldn't be able to identify it based on people who are in the vehicle, it's only if the vehicle's associated with someone who is of a criminal nexus.
I understand, well, I just want people to understand that we're not going to be out doing face recognition or something, but this is more a vehicle that's been associated with someone or something that's been illegal.
Correct, or a crime has occurred, and we find a matching vehicle for that crime.
Okay, I, I like that, it's a, how much is a, a bulletproof vest? What do they go for?
Five, five thousand dollars apiece.
Okay, so, this is like four bulletproof vests, I think we'd, we'd feel that was a good expenditure of money.
All right, so the next line is the onboarding costs for the civil attorney. I've left that highlighted yellow because you have also highlighted that personnel request, yellow.
Yes.
Next.
Dan and I are supposed to be meeting this week.
Okay.
So, continue that conversation.
Next is the costs of, the ongoing costs for the new autopsy lab. Currently, it is in the budget, the Phase One construction of the lab. This two seventy-five, the two hundred thousand of it, is the contract cost for a medical examiner?
I spoke to the coroner today, and he could not join us this afternoon, he had a, a doctor's appointment. And so, we agreed that cutting this for FY twenty-five was the prudent thing to do, because even if we go ahead and fund the Phase One, we're not, it's not going to be operational in FY twenty-five likely. And if for some reason it is, we'll deal with it then and use the revenue for autopsies and for other surrounding counties revenue as well. But, that's a conversation we can have once it's turnkey.
Okay.
So, are you all right with that?
Yes, and I wonder too, if it doesn't make sense to start having conversations with other counties, whether it's just District One, and see if we can't put together some sort of an M. O. U.
He's working on it.
Yeah, that way that there's a commitment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The next line for thirty-one thousand dollars is a request from the Recorder's Office for an online beverage license application system. It says it will improve the efficiency of the beverage license application process. This program will save on manual labor costs such as paper, ink, and postage. It will also minimize errors and time and save on parking. To help offset this cost, the Recorder's Office did freeze one of their open position, which you approved in the Personnel Meeting.
Yeah, I would say go ahead and approve this for a few reasons that you had mentioned, and then also I think it's beneficial for customers. And, you know, I think last year you had said you wanted to concentrate on I. T., some stuff to.
Yeah.
Help us.
And then, we have online building permits, which turn out to be eight times out of ten incomplete. So, I hope that these applications are nowhere near as complex.
No, they shouldn't be.
And we can, okay, good.
All right, so that takes care of the new program summary. Now, we're going to go into the non-capital summary, which should be next. This is a subset of everyone's B budgets. These are the non-capital accounts where the larger, less frequently recurring transactions occur. So, I like to go through this, since this is where a lot of the expensive equipment type things happen. So, I'm just going to start at the top and try and do my best to get through all of these line by line, and I've written a description for what each of these are. If there's any that you want to stop and discuss, please let me know. So, starting at the top with the B O C C's General Fund for four thousand dollars, different mic and technology things, a printer and a copier for this room. Next line is Community Development is requesting twenty-three thousand dollars for new wall panels for planner cubicles, and then Surface Pro's keyboards and covers.
So, I have a question. Because these are one-time purchases, is that something that we can use fund balance on?
They aren't necessarily one-time, like.
The, the two that we just talked about?
Oh, well, these specifically, the cubicles, we could use fund balance for new cubicles if you wanted to.
Okay, but the additional setup and programming and printer copier for, it's, it's upgrades to this room. There's some tweaks that need to happen to make things a little bit user-friendly, so it's just a one-time?
If you want to, usually, things like copiers are, as a whole, the county buys copiers or printers every single year.
Right.
So, usually, we levy for those, but if you, if you want to use a little bit of fund balance for technology improvements for this room, you could.
So, thoughts on that?
I think for the microphone and so forth, that makes sense for fund balance. As far as the copier goes, I mean, that's a recurring, more frequent type of an item that we would replace. So, and how much will we see ourselves using that down here? Is that a big issue?
I think they use it probably almost every day for something, for some meetings.
Commissioner, yeah, for the record, I can't print currently on this printer at all. I can make copies, so anytime if someone has come down for a meeting, hey, could you print off something? I emailed you, I can't do that, and it's just something that's happened over the years, and I've put in, of course, you can, we've been surviving so far, so.
It's a convenience feature, I mean, I'm, I'm even willing to cut it and see if we can find another department who's giving up their printer.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we need it, we need it. It's just a matter of, I, I just wasn't aware that you had that many requests.
Commissioner, I get a lot of stares, it's actually good for my health, so it's win-win right now.
Oh, well, welcome to the club.
So, are you wanting to use any fund balance for that forty-one hundred dollars? Or what are you thinking?
I, I mean, as much as it's convenient, and as little in general as it's going to get used compared to all the ones in our offices. Okay, fund balance.
Okay, so we'll use fund balance for that item. Next is the twenty-three thousand dollars from Community Development to buy new wall panels for planner cubicles, and then some Surface Pros.
Is there something wrong with the existing wall panels?
I don't know, I don't know if this is in anticipation of them moving.
We've got Director Callahan here that can speak to that.
Commissioners David Callahan, these are panels I've asked for off and on for ten years, because, yes, they're fifteen to twenty years old and obsolete.
I mean, to me, that's another one-time purchase fund balance thing, and they did go look for the stuff that we had donated to us, and there wasn't.
And the Surface Pros, is that just for out in the field?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We use those now in place of the iPads, which we used for nearly a decade, because I. T. would prefer us to use the Surface Pros.
Because of the operating system, probably.
Yes, sir.
And that is an ongoing, so if you wanted to split those two out, you could do that.
Yeah, we should do that.
All right, so you'll use fund balance for the cubicle walls. Next is fifty thousand dollars from the I. T.'s budget for the sheriff, primarily it's for copy replacements, rugged laptops for the jail, docks, antennas, licenses. The next line is P. C. repla- replacements for sixty-four thousand dollars, also in the sheriff's I. T. budget. Next is forty thousand dollars in copier replacements and printer replacements, again with I. T., and then more P. C. replacements for seventy-six thousand dollars. Next is, again with I. T., fourteen thousand dollars for data center parts and maintenance. Next, a thousand dollars for Adobe licenses, that's with the auditor. Next is seven thousand dollars with elections, they told me they are going to cut this from their budget and just make the purchase in FY twenty-four. So, I've marked this seven thousand as a remove from the budget. Next is twenty-one hundred dollars from the treasurer for desks, the computer and copier. Next with the corner is forty-seven hundred dollars for two laptops, privacy workstations, and a desk. Next is four hundred and twelve thousand dollars with nine-one-one, various lapel mics, batteries, chargers, as well as a couple chairs.
And this is all recurring, normal replacement type?
I think, I don't think that they buy radios every single year, but I know they routinely have to replace them.
It's part of the rotation, I mean, most of these look like rotation items that you've enlisted.
Yeah, a lot of these don't occur every single year, but they do come up every several years.
And how does this fit in with, I thought all the radios are being consolidated?
This is it right here, this line item, I believe.
Okay, so do we have then other line items in here that we're going to see where they've been, these things have been reduced?
Probably not, because, I mean, I would, I don't think that they made a huge purchase of radios in FY twenty-four. I'd have to ask Colin, maybe in twenty-two or twenty-three, I don't remember the last time when they bought a bunch of them at one time.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that they've been doing ten.
Patrol bought radios last year, and so did the jail, but now we've moved that to nine-one-one, so you'll see those in our patrol and our jail budget. Reduction.
Correct, Commissioners, yeah, we, we pooled all radio purchases for the Sheriff's Office under one line item this year. And last year, yes, we did order roughly the same of this request this year, but they won't be individually in patrol, in the jail, in, in those sections. Now, they're all under this one line item to consolidate. And the only caveat to that will be the, there's a request, I believe, for two or three from Marine, but because they're the dedicated Marine funds, we separated them out a little bit just to not cause too much confusion.
Sure. Okay, I just, you know, it's nice to see the, be able to add up four hundred thousand dollars in the cut line items to match up where this was increased.
You won't see, so this column change over FY twenty-four amended is the change in each account. Over last year, I don't think there's a four hundred thousand dollar increase anywhere, but that's because probably whatever account patrol used to budget for those radios, there's nothing in this year, so it's not going to show, I just don't have it in here.
Yeah, I get it, thank you.
Yep. Next is twenty-two thousand dollars from E. nine-one-one, again, more radios. Next is seven hundred and fifty dollars with juvenile detention for a control room chair. Next is twenty-five hundred dollars from A. M. P. for a new fridge for their new office space and a TV for their new conference room. Next is eighteen hundred dollars from the Sheriff's Administrative Budget for a fire-resistant cabinet. Next is fourteen hundred dollars from Animal Control for a net gun and a reload cartridge. Next is eight thousand dollars from Patrol for ten gas masks. Next is eighty-nine hundred dollars from Driver's Licensing for a fingerprint scanner and then controllers for their Q. Less application. Same with the next line, again, Driver's Licensing, the first one was Post Falls, this one's Coeur d'Alene. Next is eighty-nine hundred dollars from Records, again, for a fingerprint scanner. Next is SWAT with nineteen hundred dollars for one gas mask, two voice projection units with microphones. Next is twenty-eight thousand dollars with the Sheriff's Maintenance Budget for a chain hoist, a C. N. C. plasma cutter, a laser cleaner slash welder, and a table saw.
Are these replacements?
I don't know.
Commissioners, on further discussion with Tom, we've agreed to remove the main, maintenance chain hoist and the laser cleaner from this year's budget.
The chain hoist and the.
Laser cleaner, welder.
Welder, okay.
So, it's about eleven thousand.
Yes. Next is six thousand dollars from the jail's Detention Response Team for eleven riot armor kits. Next is forty-four thousand dollars from the jail for mannequins and A. E. D. trainers, restraints chair, more mannequins, and then a transport vehicle cargo box. Next is twenty-two hundred dollars from the airport for a tough book. Also with the airport is ten thousand dollars for radios. Next is five hundred dollars with noxious weeds for an A. T. V. sprayer. Next is fifteen thousand dollars with parks for fall protection mats for martial arts training, a grading bucket for the tractor, a welder, utility trailer, and welding table.
That is all restricted funds, I believe.
No, that is of property tax-supported, that's Fund Thirty-five.
Okay, because it says boat launch, which is typical vessel.
Oh, well, boat launch, you're right, if it's in the boat launch budget, it is funded with boat launch revenues, so you're right. It's not covered by property tax.
Okay.
Next is seventeen hundred dollars from the tax-supported parks budget for a chainsaw and gas-powered pole saw. Then, six hundred dollars from vessel for a pressure washer. Twenty-three thousand dollars from rec. Safety for binoculars, portable radios, and cameras. And then, twenty-eight thousand dollars from Carleen in District Court. This is all stuff related to the new building. I did send the list to David Mendez just to make sure that nothing Carleen is asking for is already covered in his budget, and he'll let me know if there are any overlaps. But, this is a lot of stuff, computers, laptops for the bailiff, furniture, fifty-inch screens for the security room, copiers, hearing assistance for the courtrooms, more TVs. And then, lastly, at the bottom is all of Solid Waste, so ninety-five hundred for desktop scanner and laptop accessories, fourteen thousand for grounds maintenance equipment, ten thousand for drum lifter, portable generator, three thousand for maintenance equipment, and then thirty-one thousand for filters and a welder. So, I've gone through the list and read it into the records, so you're aware of what's in there. If there's anything that you want to discuss further, let me know, or if you have any more questions.
Bill, any questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. All right, thoughts?
Well, well, right now, it's, I mean, some of this is part of the expansion. Looks like we'll be moving in in June, so we have to kind of be ready for that. And, you know, at this point, no other questions.
Okay, so then, we're going to jump into the OpEx summary. So, this is on the budget level, so each of these lines is actually the total increase or decrease of an entire budget. We're not looking at the individual account details, so each of these lines is one budget in and of itself. The items in green decreased greater than ten thousand dollars, the items in red increased greater than ten thousand dollars. For the sake of time, I'm just going to cover the ones in red, the budgets that increased greater than ten thousand. If there's other ones that you have questions on, let me know, and we can look at them, but I just figured our time was best spent on the largest increases. So, I'm going to start in this column, do my best to keep track here. So, this is the B O C C's General Fund Budget increased by a hundred thousand. So, this is the B O C C's general fund budget increased by a hundred thousand dollars due to increase in utilities for the new building. We moved the museum's community support payment here, so that's a twenty thousand dollar increase. A twelve thousand increase in consultants for Clearwater Analytics, a ten thousand dollar increase in the county employee appreciation line, five thousand dollar increase in outside counsel, five thousand dollar increase for outside auditor, and then other miscellaneous increases and decreases that were small.
So, um, I think we should address the ten thousand dollars in employee appreciation. Um, every five or so years, uh, the commissioners have tried to do, uh, appreciation, breakfast, lunch, that kinda thing. So the last one was in twenty-nineteen, and I think we spent less than five thousand dollars and served about three hundred people.
But that was then.
Yep.
Yeah.
We can put it off another year, or we can look at doing something less expensive, or... Bill, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I don't like to go cheap where it's impo- where employees are concerned, but at the same time, I don't think this is a critical expenditure that really makes a difference in the lives of the employees and their families. So I would be willing to put this off.
Well, that certainly makes sense, so I wouldn't argue with that. If the money's not there, uh, this should certainly not be a high priority.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna mark that as a cut. The next one, jumping down to, oh boy, line ten, is the building and grounds B budget increased by fifty thousand dollars. This is a due to a twenty thousand dollar increase in inspections and licensing. That's that elevator inspection fee. Um, Greg talked to you about a fourteen thousand dollar increase in janitorial supplies, a fourteen thousand dollar increase in building repair and maintenance, a nine thousand, and then other miscellaneous increases and decreases. Then, jumping down to the next one, on line sixteen, this is IT's budget. Two hundred and sixteen thousand dollar increase in subscription-based software. I wanna say this is us moving to the new Microsoft. They had talked about it in their budget presentation with you. And then a fifteen thousand dollar increase in software maintenance. Next line is a twenty-eight thousand dollar increase in their B budget. We already talked about the rugged laptops for the jail, um, which is the majority of the increase, twenty-one thousand, and then other increases in software maintenance, non-capital software, and then PC replacements.
So these things are just listed twice. It's not that they're double counted from our non-
From the last document we looked at, correct. The one we looked at was a subset of this document.
Gotcha, thank you.
Jumping down to line twenty-three, this is our liability insurance. This is almost a three hundred thousand dollar increase, and that's primarily due to the increase in our I-CRIM premium as well as s- as some increases in vehicle repair and insurance deductibles.
And we've got our insurance, uh, our local representative looking into that.
Okay. Uh, jumping down to line fifty-two, this is the park's boat launch B budget, increased twelve thousand dollars, primarily an increase in repair and renovation expense.
And that is all, um, from those fees?
That's the boat launch dol- dollars, yes. And then, line fifty-four, this is snowmobile increased eleven thousand. This is the state portion. It increased because, um, uh, Nick removed his budget in the county-funded portion since the county snowmobile revenues are going away. So you'll, there's a decrease there and an offsetting increase here. It's just a reallocation of budget to where there's revenue. Next is a, is the vessel budget increased fifty-three thousand dollars, primarily due to budgeted, uh, renovations and repairs for a dock. Jumping down to line fifty-seven, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, those are all solid waste. I'm not gonna go through each of those unless you want me to.
I'm fine.
Um, so continuing on down to line sixty-nine, this is the new county assistance budget in Fund Ten. So the indigent fund, Fund Forty, is closing at the end of FY twenty-four, so all of their operations are moving to general fund. So that's why this shows as an increase, 'cause it's a new budget. There is a corresponding decrease in the Fund Forty budgets of twenty-seven thousand dollars, so it's an offset. And then all of the county assistance revenues are also being moved to Fund Ten. Going down to line seventy-four, this is the coroner's budget, and this increase of a hundred and eighteen thousand is pretty much all due to those on that, those new costs for the autopsy lab, but we just cut that. So this line will get updated and, and this will go down. Next is Carleen in district court. Her B budget went up by sixty-two thousand dollars. This is primarily due to her requesting new equipment for, um, there we go, anyway. Hang on a second. All right, this is a thirty thousand dollar increase in office supplies. All of that's for the new building. Ten thousand dollar increase in non-capital equipment for the new building. Five thousand dollar increase in legal services, five thousand dollar increase in translation services, ten thousand dollar increase in psychosexual evaluations.
So some of that stuff, um, David Mendez is also waiting to hear from the Supreme Court because they're funding a lot of stuff for the courtrooms.
They're supposed to.
Yeah, they're supposed to. So that's, we just won't have answers on that yet, but I'm expecting some reductions in there when we figure out what they're gonna come forward with.
Okay. Um, next, on line seventy-seven, a twenty-four thousand dollar increase. This is DUI court, and it's an increase ju- in drug testing.
And that's usually judge ordered.
Yes, it is. It's also offset by revenues from the state. The only specialty court that really the revenues don't cover the expenses is mental health, 'cause none of those people in that court can pay, so.
Gotcha.
Um, on line seventy-nine, increased a hundred and nineteen thousand. This is the new budget for the veterans specialty court. So this is a new budget, and it is being offset by state revenues. Line eighty-four is HR's budget, increased by nineteen thousand. The majority of that is the new employee resph- referral software.
And we should see some decrease, obviously, with the advertising.
Yeah, twelve thousand.
There was, yeah, there was a twelve thousand dollar decrease in advertising. And then the sheriff, nine-one-one budget, went up two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, primarily due to the radios that we talked about, uh, as part of non-capital. And then E-nine-one-one B budget went up fifty-eight thousand dollars. That budget is self-funded. And then sheriff's admin budget went up by two hundred and four thousand dollars. Main drivers of that was a twelve thousand dollar increase in consultants for an evidence audit, a five thousand dollar increase in recruiting expense, a sixty thousand dollar increase due to the Casey North Electric Utilities, a thirty-one thousand dollar increase in telephone, a seven thousand dollar increase in merit system and awards, a sixteen thousand dollar increase in travel expenses, and a forty-seven thousand dollar increase in seminars and professional associations. Going down to line ninety-five, this is the patrol B budget. It increased by almost thirteen thousand dollars, primarily due to... Okay, there's a lot here. Uh, the increase in the fuel budget, a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar increase in fuel because everybody else's fuel budgets decreased and it all moved here. Decrease in vehicle expense, decrease in weapons, ten thousand dollar increase in ammo, a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar decrease in non-capital equipment, eight thousand dollar increase in non-capital for gas masks, twenty-one thousand dollar increase for insurance deductible, seventy-one thousand dollar increase for the new TASER contract, eight thousand dollar increase in seminars and professional associations. Line ninety-eight, this is, um, the tax-supported portion of the K-9 program. This is for dog food and veterinary services. These have always been paid out of patrol's B budget. Um, I asked Stephanie to start using the existing K-9 budget instead in our justice fund so that I could more clearly see the tax-supported portion of that program. So those costs have always been here, it's just now they're being pulled out into their own budget. So it's not necessarily an increase. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then, line one oh four is driver's licensing. We already covered this in non-capital. The main increase is due to the request for the fingerprint machine and then the, the like sticks with the Q-less application. Same with the next line with post-falls driver's license. Line one eleven is the jail B budget. That increased four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And, I have to zoom out, this is too much. That is primarily due to a four thousand dollar increase in office supplies, seventeen thousand dollar increase in uniforms, six thousand dollar increase in safety supplies, sixty-five hundred dollar decrease due to our new scheduling system in New World that they use now, uh, twenty thousand dollar increase in ammo, forty-six thousand dollar increase in electric, five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar increase in contracted medical services, thirty-nine thousand dollar increase in food services, eleven thousand dollar increase in merit system and awards. This would be to provide two free meals per week, per shift of deputies. A thirty-one thousand dollar increase for the TASER contract, twenty-one thousand dollar increase in travel expenses, a eighteen thousand dollar increase in seminars and professional associations. Line one fifteen is the jail's detention response team. They increased thirty thousand dollars, primarily due to a seven thousand dollar increase in weapons, nine thousand dollar increase in ammo, six thousand dollar increase for the riot armor kits, and then an eleven thousand dollar increase in travel expenses. And that is that. I forgot one thing on the new program summary, but I'll wait to jump back to that. Did you have any questions on everything that we just went through?
I have one question on line, um, one twenty-four. So, did we remove thirty thousand dollars from, um, RBS funded to tax-funded on their fuel?
The, our, I would have to go look at that. If the thirty-seven dot six, I thought that the vessel fuel actually stayed with them, 'cause I remember looking at that, but my note here says differently, so I will have to go look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
No questions.
Okay. Going back to the new program summary, there was one at the bottom that I forgot to go over. This is part of our health insurance fund. The reason it's down here is it's not included in the total of the rest of the budget, 'cause it's an internal service fund. So this is a request from HR and also kind of from the auditor's office. This is a proposal. It's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a short-term disability policy for all employees. The goal of this is to try and do away with the vacation donation program that we currently have. It's just something that we're putting out there for the board to consider. The vacation donation program is becoming very cumbersome with the, as much as we've grown, and it is really unequitable in the way it's accessible to employees. So certain people benefit from it and certain people do not. And so, kind of, the idea between HR and auditor is the potential of a short-term disability policy instead. So when people need time for unexpected illness or maternity leave or something, they would access this policy instead of vacation donation. So. And it's just something for the board to consider, and that's probably a deeper conversation with myself and HR and Alliant. But if you're interested in exploring this, it would be nice to know so that I can have those conversations with Alliant and with you guys. So, thoughts?
I think July first is our meeting, uh, that I would like to, we can add this as an agenda item on this topic, so.
Okay.
I don't necessarily oppose the idea, but it's kind of a heavy lift for where we're sitting right now.
Right. So this money is included in the line item of the health insurance increase on our preliminary summary. That's where it's being reflected in the budget.
Okay.
So it could potentially be offset by passing off health insurance costs to the employees, but... Any other questions? That's all that I had for B budget. It's very, very detailed, and so I, I try to only touch on the budgets that increase the most. But do you have any questions, thoughts or concerns?
Uh, I think there's some, a couple of things I identified in this, and I'll go back to the specific departments and just ask, um, some questions.
Okay.
So, and then, next Tuesday is our next big budget meeting.
I believe so. Let me open this. So, yes, our next meeting is Tuesday, July second. So we only have two more meetings essentially to pretty much arrive at a balanced budget. Our final meeting is July nineteenth, and then I have to present it by balance on August first. Um, at our next meeting, I would really like if the board could tell me what COLA percentage they want to do. I do, at this point, need some direction on that.
Can we do that today? Are you ready?
You wanna talk about that right now?
I, I do, but unless you don't.
Well, let's talk about it.
Okay. Um, let me try to find that pretty piece of paper with all the yellow on it. Here it is.
It would be, yeah, this one. So, yeah, I had provided you guys this document that just lines out the cost of a COLA and steps, and then also the savings from cutting open positions at various percentage levels. So is there a certain one that you have landed at that you would like to look at?
Did you have thoughts on that?
Well, um, last year when we talked about doing these steps, you know, my initial thoughts on it was to not do a COLA every year with the steps, but to try to get the matrix adjusted every two to three years so that it keeps pace, uh, because the employees are getting their annual steps as well, and that can add up to a lot. And, um, I think, given where we are with this budget, and, you know, we, we haven't even talked about, you know, are we gonna look at a tax increase? I mean, I would like to not have to look at one, but, uh, depending on the, uh, COLA adjustment, that might have to be something that's on the table.
So, my only concern about that is we're doing a wage study, um, in FY twenty-five for FY twenty-six. So, depending on what the wage study finds out, it may put us behind and we may not be able to catch up to market, you know, move those steps along. Uh, it's just a thought. I'm not saying that I, I don't, you know, disagree. I, to me, the steps are definitely primary. My, um, my other thought, though, about not doing at least, uh, a one percent, um, COLA is that if we look at increasing the amount that employees have to pay for medical, then I'd like something to offset that.
Yeah, and that's reasonable, and I do think that we need to start looking at sharing those expenses that increase in the cost. You know, to have the county pay for it, uh, year in and year out is a big benefit, but it's like a phantom benefit for people, 'cause they don't really see that. And, uh, it does go up every year. And, uh, conversely, if we could get savings, I would be all for splitting those savings with the employees. So I hear your concern. It, it makes sense. I think what we just have to do is we have to get down to the, the finer numbers here, uh, 'cause we still have a, you know, pretty big discrepancy.
So if you were to do a zero percent tax increase, you would have to pass off a hundred percent of our health insurance increase to the employees. 'Cause our deficit at a zero percent increase is five point nine million. So you'd have to pass off the million dollars in health increase to the employees completely. You could do no steps, no COLA. You would have to cut every single new program requests, and you would have to cut every single A-budget personnel- new program requests, and you would have to cut every single A-budget personnel request, and you would still be a million dollars in the hole.
Is there any good news that you have to share with us?
If you wanna do a zero percent increase, you cut absolutely everything, and then you go in and reduce what we already have.
Yeah.
If you're willing to do that, I guess that's within your purview. If, at our three percent increase, I think coming down to at least a two percent COLA gets us, it's at least a starting point to try and get balanced. And if you wanna do something higher than that, then I think that I would be real, I'd like to know how we're gonna pay for it.
Well, I'm gonna let Commissioner Duncan drive that one, only because until we get these numbers small enough, I don't see where we can have a meaningful conversation. But we certainly can have a starting point. So, if you wanna go with a one percent, we can go with a one percent. You wanna go with a one and a half or a half. Either way, it, it's irrelevant to me until we get these numbers small enough, and then we can decide where we're gonna be, whether it's, you know, zero percent, three percent, or some number in between.
So, let's switch then to cutting or funding open positions over a hundred days. What are your thoughts on that one?
Well, okay, so, most of the positions are in the sheriff's office. They're relatively high-paid positions, and they're starting to fill those positions, largely 'cause of what we've done with the pay. So, my only trepidation with that is how many positions do we think we can fill in the next twelve months? How many positions do we wanna fill? I would assume we wanna fill as many as we can, because they've been so vacant for so long. We're paying this overtime. We, we, we pay a lot. There's a, there's a cost to that. So, I'd be open to looking at maybe twenty-five percent of those positions, getting funded less, because I expect us to be hiring. But that's probably something that H R or the sheriff's office could help us with as far as where we are with filling those positions and what a reasonable expectation is. We went through the same exercise with dispatch. And, you know, we were down to, what, seven or nine dispatchers? And the goal was to get to seventeen, I think, by the end of the year. And we knew they weren't all gonna come on board on day one, but we've been filling those positions. So, maybe if we could figure out some way where certain number of positions are either, you know, only twenty-five percent funded, and the next number is fifty percent, and then the last number is seventy-five percent, knowing that we're probably gonna hire those people earlier in the fiscal year, and the twenty-five percent funded positions might get filled towards the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, it'd be great if you guys would work with H R to figure out which ones would be on the table for those types of percentage cuts. And then, I suppose I can put that offer out to all the E Os. If you have a position that's been open a hundred days, what's the likelihood of filling it? Otherwise, we'll fund it at fifty percent. And I'm, I'm willing to go down to a one percent COLA at this point for budget talks for our next July second meeting.
Are you okay with one percent as well?
Yeah, we gotta start somewhere.
See what it looks like?
Yep.
Okay, and then-
Sorry, Bill, are you still on the line? Might not be, okay. All right.
And then, I have a meeting with H R and Alliant tomorrow, I believe, to get finalized numbers. I'm really hoping our health insurance increase doesn't go up, so we'll see. I'll have updated info for you on that next time.
And I think preliminarily, we looked at if we did increase the employees, which ones we would do, if we would just do spouses and, and stuff like that.
Yeah, initially they had said only the spouse, but now they're saying across the board, just increase everybody by the same percent, except the employee only.
Right, right. So, with kids and looking at a higher tobacco rate as well.
Yeah. Do you have any thoughts? Currently, that's fifty dollars, increasing it to sixty or seventy. Do you have a preference between the two? I checked with Alliant, and they said industry standard is between fifty to seventy is fine.
This is an increase that the employee-
It's like a seven, it's like a, right now, they have to pay fifty dollars a month if they use tobacco. Nicotine.
And it's on the honor system.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, yeah, but if they get caught, that can affect, that can affect the-
Yeah, if they get caught, it's health insurance fraud, and they're in big trouble.
Yes.
So.
Look, it's, it's a cost that should be borne by the user.
So, maybe we look at the percentage that we're looking at, all of that, and...
I think if you go up to seventy dollars, it's, it's about like a seventeen thousand dollar saving to the county, just based on how many nicotine users we have right now.
That just seems like twenty dollars, well, two hundred and forty a year.
It's not a lot of money, but it'll add up.
Something, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so, next Tuesday, do you think you'll be able to visit some of our yellow stuff and make decisions on those?
Yes, yes.
Yes, actually, I was gonna say that. That's another thing. I'll be going back to all the items you've marked as yellow over the next two meetings and asking you to decide one way or the other.
Yeah, could you send updated spreadsheets with that, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we're to the public comment portion. Ron?
Good afternoon, Ron Hartman. What am I about to talk about has nothing that'll help fix this year's budget. What we need to do is get out in front of this. We need to be more proactive for future budgets. So, when it comes to variable cost, what I have seen attending meetings and watching videos is all except one county department budget is just reactive. The only county, uh, county department that has shown proactive action is the sheriff's department. I wanna commend them for that. When Bob got in, he eliminated one captain's position. They also have some contract people. Each department manager needs to do all the following. This is the managers. Develop hard measurable metrics to measure efficiency. Survey employees, asking how many hours per week they spend doing work a clerk could perform. On this one, I'm kinda looking at the, at the, at our attorneys. Third, determine what positions could be contract versus full-time employees. Fourth, use more software. Property taxes are the most unfair of all forms of tax. You have a lot of retired people living in community, in Cootney County. These people have worked hard all their lives, uh, worked hard and saved all their lives to live out their life in their own home. You are taxing them literally out of their homes. I have heard many reasons why you cannot use other forms of taxes to collect money for the county. So, I challenge the commissioners to work with our state senators and our state House representatives to write new bills allowing the county more ways to collect taxes. We need to look out more than one year at a time, so that we aren't dealing with these budget crises every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, any other public comments on the line, Jonathan? Okay, four o'clock, meeting adjourned. Thank you.